So I believe it's one of five and we're going to get started. My name is Akar Daniel Yankaraka. I'm the Vice President of Mutu. Mr. President has asked me to step in today. Well, the two of us, I'm going to take the first half and then the secretary will take the second half. As you know, today is the is the fourth of Mutu Town Hall meeting with the Benistec Benetaria candidate. And our guest today is Honorable Joe Wire of the All Progressive Grand Alliance Party. He he will be speaking to us today about his vision for Benue and what he plans to do if he gets elected. Please welcome and welcome me and Honorable Joe Wire. Welcome, sir. Sir, can you all meet yourself so we know you are with us? Is there where we can reach him by phone?
Let me call him.
Okay, alright.
Is that, can you hear me now?
Okay, yes.
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. Welcome, sir.
Yes.
Without further ado, we're going to give you time like ten to fifteen minutes to to tell us about your vision for Benue. And then we'll go straight into the questions. And so please feel free to introduce yourself again. Welcome.
It's, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be talking to this very august forum. I am happy to be here. My name is Joseph Wire. I am the governorship candidate for All Progressive Grand Alliance. Abga in Benue. I am from the chief speaking area. Van de Keer in particular, Van de Keer Local Government. Before I talk about my vision for Benue, maybe I need to give you a little background of who Joseph Wire is.
Alright, sir, but before you continue this, there appears to be an echo.
Yeah, there was somebody seems to be in the room.
Yes. And can we see you? Is it possible? To, camera?
Okay, you.
Can you turn on your video?
Yeah. I think you have to switch that. Just a moment.
Okay.
Somebody is there seems to have their also logged in. That's why we are seeing that we're hearing the echo. So if there is somebody else in the room who also has their own on, they should go to another room because the echo is on.
Okay.
Alright, carry on, sir. Thank you.
Yes. So once again, thank you. My my name is Joseph Wire. I have the opportunity of talking to you today about my vision for Benue. As I present to you my manifesto and how I intend to run the government by the special grace of God when we come into power. A bit of my background. I went to primary school in Adipo, Saint Anne's Primary School. GSS Book Co. For my secondary education. I went to university, Bayeiro University for my professional diploma in mass communication. Where I excelled, had a distinction and was recommended for a master's program in the UK. Where I obtained my master's degree. Also in journalism studies from the foremost university, Cardiff University. I hold a master's degree in journalism studies and upon my return, I have also worked as a journalist. I started as a reporter trainee with Radio Benue. As far back as nineteen eighty-three. From where I rose to a senior reporter, chief correspondent. Later I left Radio Benue, started a newspaper called Accord Newspaper. Which I was the managing director and editor-in-chief. Upon exiting the newspaper industry in nineteen ninety-two, I went into business. And since nineteen ninety-two, I have been actively a businessman. Dealing in real estate, communication, security. A few of my companies deal with security and communication gadgets essentially for the military and the law enforcement agencies. So in the last thirty years or so, I have been actively doing business between Kaduna and Abuja. In Kaduna, I run a hotel business. Apart from the real estate business and these other businesses I have just mentioned. So roughly that's who Joseph Wire is. Now, over the years, in the course of my practice of journalism and even as a businessman, I have been involved in popular struggles. Struggles that have essentially to do with the interest of the people defending and standing up for what I believe is right. Standing for the voiceless on a number of occasions. I have been an advocate of human rights, social justice. I have stood for the downtrodden. Particularly here in Benue. And it's on record. About twenty-two years ago, I was in the US and I had the privilege of addressing the Mutu Convention in Pensacola, Florida. And it had to do with our situation in Benue. At the time we were running, we had an organization, a prayer group called Benue Proactive Coalition, which I was head. And essentially it was to put government in check. Called the government at the time to account for the mandate that was given. So we took the government on certain issues. It was not personal, but it was something that had to do with accountability and transparency in government. While I was practicing, I also confronted the military on a number of occasions over issues of corruption. And I dared government on a number of occasions in my write-ups. So over the years, I have been a very strong advocate of democracy. And I believe for some of us, the efforts paid off when in nineteen ninety-nine, the army, the military handed over to civil democracy. So since nineteen ninety-nine, I have not been actively into politics. But I have been on the sideline guiding and putting word where need be to make the best out of the system for our people. So basically, that is who I am. And talking about the vision. I have written a couple of literature to the people of the state, two letters which I wrote. One was explaining why I came into the race. And in that letter which I wrote to the people of the state explaining the reasons for coming into the race, I looked at what has happened since nineteen ninety-nine. Almost twenty-three years of return to civil democracy. And if we are to take stock of what has happened in the last twenty-three years, is actually a sorry story particularly for us in Benue. Because the question to ask is that have we fared any better twenty-three years after? When we look at our security, are we more secured now than twenty-three years back? What is the nature of our infrastructure? Have we made any improvement? To say, oh, we have tapped into those dividends of democracy? Looking at our educational system, looking at our hospitals, can we say twenty-three years after? We are better off? Can we look at democracy and say it's a curse or a blessing for us here in Benue? So it was the totality of this. And looking at the situation where we are as a people. Practically today Benue is in a very dire situation. And it requires a serious intervention to rescue us from the situation that we have found ourselves. Now, in the letter that I referred to, that the first letter that I wrote, giving reasons why I'm coming into this race, two fundamental reasons were given. One was I was called by my people. My clan called me, my king's folk sent word for me to come. And when I came, that was in November of twenty twenty-one. They gave me the message that they needed for me. They had a vision. And this was the entire community telling me that they had consistently received this divine revelation that they should invite me to come and contest for the governorship of the state. They quoted the scriptures, giving reasons why it was not on their accord, but it was more of a divine call. And on the strength of what they told me, I said, I was going to look deeply into it that seriously, if the reason for which they called me was divine and God was the support of this, I would make myself available. So I needed time to reflect on it deeply, to pray, to fast. So I took off time, twenty-one days to pray and fast to seek the face of God if it was truly his plan for me to contest. And after twenty-one days of fasting and prayers, it became very apparent from the testimonies of different people, including people I have never come across who also gave me similar revelations. So it was on account of that that a month later, on the thirty-first of January twenty twenty-two, I went back to my village and I told my king's folk that yes, having prayed, fasted and also received similar revelations, I was ready to accept the call. And the rest is history. They gave me their blessing. They took me to the district, from the district to the main local government where the community gathered, gave me their blessing and asked me to go out and meet the entire Benue, which is my larger constituency for this particular assignment. So I went out for consultations. And in the course of my reaching out to people across different parties, across the entire state, it became very apparent that the problems that we face as a people are deeper than we see on the face value. I need to say here that at the time I came in, I didn't have a political party. I did not belong to any party. I had left parties and politics far back as twenty fourteen. So at the time I was called to come in, I did not belong to any party. So the consultations was for me to be guided as to making the right choice as to which party one would contest election as it is mandatory that if you are contesting, you must contest on a platform. So it was in the course of the consultations that I came across people from different political parties, different backgrounds, traditional rulers, religious rulers, trade union, students. And it was quite overwhelming that we as a people, particularly in the chief speaking area and by extension, even the Idomas, were people under siege and the problems are deep. Apart from the problem of insecurity, which is very dire, we have problems of collapsed infrastructure. We have problems of failing educational system. The structures are not there. If you go to some primary school, secondary schools and you see the condition in which our wars, our brothers and sisters, our younger ones receive instructions is quite, quite appalling.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir, but because of time, can you summarize our vision for the state so that we can move on?
Okay, yes. So now the vision, I'm just giving you a general background to how I came into the race and what informed, yes. So I will go to my vision. My vision is encapsulated in the manifesto. So if you want me to talk straight about my vision, which is captured in the manifesto, I can go straight to it now.
Of course, please. Thank you.
Yes. So the manifesto, I have entitled the manifesto, Rebuilding Benue State, Nehemiah Model. The question would be, what is Nehemiah Model? Those of us who are familiar with the scriptures, we know about the book of Nehemiah. That once upon a time, there lived a man. There was a man, a Jew, who lived in a foreign land and was serving a foreign king. And when news came to him that Jerusalem, which is the seat of the Jewish nation, the walls had collapsed, things had fallen apart, he sought for permission from the king to go and put, help rebuild the walls of Jerusalem. So essentially, we have a similar situation in Benue where the walls of our state have totally collapsed. If you look at it from any angle, and I use the walls of Benue figuratively. In the area of education, the walls have collapsed. Hospitals, walls have collapsed. Infrastructure, walls have collapsed. Our industrialization platform collapsed. So we look at it that if we are to rebuild these walls, we must adopt a model that brings everybody on board. And what this Nehemiah model talks about is joining hands. Individuals joining hands, communities coming together, everyone doing their own portion. And collectively, we will resolve the issues that confront us. Because make no mistake, the problems that confront us are so huge that we cannot afford to leave it only to politicians. We cannot afford to leave it in the hands of just a few people. And that's why I'm excited to come on this town hall meeting because you in the diaspora, we need you here. Nehemiah was in the diaspora. He got concerned about what was happening at home and he sought permission to come back home to rebuild the walls of his country. And it is the same expectation that I am looking forward to you guys in the diaspora. You have leveled enough over there. It is time for us all to come home. So all hands must be on deck. So our Nehemiah model talks about seven key areas. But the number one is security. Because without security, no nation can develop. No nation can attract investment. And for us as a state that is battling unemployment, crime rate and all of this, if we don't address security first, it will be difficult for us to make any serious impact. So we have put security as our top priority when we come into government. Number two is the economy. Call it economic security. For people to survive, you must also assure them of the basics. So we have about five pillars of how we want to restructure our economy so that we can make life easy for our people. So that our people will no longer be dependent on government. The main trust of our economic policy would be for people to think inwards, not looking up to government. The era where everybody looks up to government for employment, looks up to government for projects, look up to government for everything. We are going to democratize the economic policies in such a way that we will have several platforms by which people will be able to have conducive atmosphere to try, for their businesses to try. We have five pillars under that how we will achieve that. I will go through that later. Then the third one is education. Education is key to everything. If our people are not properly educated, no matter what it is you do, the results will always fall short. Today, Japan is a great power. One of the biggest powers, as small as they are, is one of the biggest economies in the world and is because they place priority on education. So we are going to place serious priority on education in a manner that we will look at technical vocational education, we give it serious priority in at the secondary, the primary and secondary level, we do that. Even at the tertiary, we will also be looking at the sciences, computational sciences, natural sciences, agricultural, health sciences, all of those things, we will give priority on the education. Then we move to agriculture. Of course, everybody knows that in Ben, in Nigeria, Benue has been described as a food basket of a nation. And we don't want it to be a paper description. We want it to be real. Where we will be a net exporter of food, food produce, where people can generate money on their own, like what is happening in other states now. They've taken the shine of Benue. For instance, Kebi. Kebi has become a mass producer and probably exporter of rice, millet. Even Anambra, our neighbors here with limited land, they are exporting vegetables. And with the enormous potentials, agricultural potentials that Benue has, there is absolutely no reason why we should not be a proud exporter of most of what we produce. In fact, Nigeria is reputed to be the largest young producer. But if you reduce it to Nigeria, who produces the largest young? Benue. So technically, Benue can be described as the largest young producer in the world. But are we exporting it? No. Smaller countries are taking the shine, people come by from us and then do the export. We are being short-changed. So we are looking at ways by which we will introduce new crops. There are also about five or six pillars of how we intend to handle the agricultural sector in such a manner that yes, probably we can say we are an exporter of most of these products that we produce. Then quickly, the fifth one is entrepreneurship. We want to encourage entrepreneurial skills where people should learn different traits. People should be able to do different things without necessarily having to look up to government for jobs. I have had the opportunity as a businessman to have traveled to almost five continents of the world and specific examples of countries like China and India. We are small families, dedicate their expertise of certain trades. And over time, they have become net exporters of such businesses. We want to encourage that. We will set up cottage industries. We will encourage our people to do some of the things that on their own they can stand on their feet without having to look up to government. So that's number five. Number six, infrastructure. Infrastructure is more of a runaway sector. It's wide, it covers so many things. But some of the things we would basically look at for you to stimulate economic growth. Your infrastructure must also be top-notch. Here in Benue, and I have traveled in the course of my consultations, I have traveled almost everywhere. And it's appalling. We don't have roads, even feeder roads. Basic accesses where food produce are supposed to be coming out from. You go, for instance, in my local area, Vandikia Konshisha Axis, where a lot of oranges are produced. At times you feel like crying when you, you see shops. Of uh oranges trapped because the roads are bad. And in the course of trying to get them out, some of them go bad, most of them. The farmers end up not getting value for, for, for their efforts and for all of what they are putting. So we will uh be, we'll pay very serious attention to infrastructure, particularly roads. And this is one area that I have a bit of expertise in. And part of the strategy we're going to adapt when we come into government is. To ensure that in each senatorial district, we will have a construction camp. Where that camp takes care of all the road networks, the bridges, the culvers that are going to be constructed within that. Senatorial district, it will be done there. So zone A, we have is construction camp, zone B, we have, zone C, we have. And they will be fully equipped. So works will be going on simultaneously. We are not going to have a situation where we have just one camp. And then when they finish in one place, they now move to another load. We are a state in a hurry to develop. We have lagged behind for so long that we must do what we need to do and do it very fast. So our approach will be as much as possible, we will put all of these things in place. So that development can be hastened to promote our economic growth. So in a nutshell, that's where uh this is an abridged manifesto. These are the areas that cover our abridged manifesto. Which is rebuilding Benue state, the Nehemiah model. And let me repeat, it is a model that requires all hands to be on deck. And we are inviting everyone to join us when we come into government. Thank you for the opportunities.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for uh taking the time to explain your vision and manifesto to, to us here. Uh at this point, we're going to switch over to uh the question and answer session and. I want to remind everyone here present that if you have a question, please take time to type it in the chat. And myself and the secretary will be uh reading it out to the candidate. And uh I'll be here very shortly, I don't know, hand it over to the secretary. And then at some point, we will open it up. If you really want to speak up, uh you, you can go ahead and do that. Uh so, one of the first questions that we have here, I know that you have given us an abridged version of your. Vision that has seven items, uh seven things that you want to accomplish. Uh you know, you cannot take all of this uh at the same time when you come into office. So as governor, what would be your top priority uh uh out of this that you want to accomplish within the first hundred days?
The first is security, security, security. And if you look at our abridged manifesto. That is number one. Because if we don't tackle security, and it's a very serious problem. In the course of my going around the states, from Twande. Go to Katzina, Allah, to Guma, to Logo, move to Guma. To Gwer Wests. The same complaint I received. And this complaints and lamentations came from the toughest community leaders. We are a people under siege, practically under siege. And any person pretending to run a government. Whose people are insecure is wasting his time. So for me. As a ma, as a Benue indigenous who is deeply concerned, and as your governor, by the special grace of God. That will be my first priority to resolve that. And now we do everything. Using my skills of negotiations, trying to find out the deep, the root causes of this. Carnage that has, this persistent carnage that has been going on. A lot of our people are still in IDP camps. If you go to those IDP camps. As a Benue person, you will be ashamed of yourself. So as a government, we will do nothing. Without solving that problem. That will be our number one problem. We will nail it and within the first one hundred days, I believe God being on our side. And God has a purpose why he wants me to come in. It will be a miracle that, yes, a problem that has been politicized over time, a problem that seems to have no. Uh resolution, we will, by the special grace of God, resolve it within one hundred days. To get our people back to their ancestral homes. That will be one of our biggest uh concerns and uh. Issues to address.
Thank you very much, sir. That's very wonderful. Thank you for, for, for that answer. Um I mean, for every candidate that we've had on this platform, they talk about security. And of course, the president administration is also working on that. What can you do differently? What have they done?
Yes, the, the, the one, the first thing is to de-politicize. Excuse me, to de-politicize the issue. This issue should not, and that's why Abga, which on whose platform I stand. Offers the best option to neutralize this and resolve the problem. Any of the two other parties that have been there, that have been talking about. Game, uh blame game. This is an issue that we should not engage in the blame game thing. What we intend to do, and using my experience, I have been within the security. Uh community in terms of provision of some of the gadgets. We are going to approach it using high-tech ICT systems. To monitor, to gather intelligence. And to also uh give us a clear picture of what is truly on ground. That's number one. And number two, we will be very fair. If the blame is with our people, we will try and resolve that. For instance, if uh cattle rustling. Is confirmed to be true, who would deal with it? And deal with it decisively to send a message that, look. Those who go to equity must go with clean hands. We cannot afford a situation where. We are immersed in double dealing. So we must send a clear message to our people. Don't take what does not belong to you. And if anybody now comes. To create problems, we will be in a better position to deal with it.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Uh to, to add to that question, so you mentioned and the issue of IDPs. Uh do you know how many, how many people we have in the IDP camps and how you're going to get them back home?
Well, uh I can't say the numbers off head, but I know it's huge. And it's going to be a gradual process because first, uh like. You do abroad, where you, you're calling from. We need to first engage our people before we even take them back. After we have resolved the issues. We will need to cancel them. Because a good number of them still have a kind of psychological. Uh torture. The, even if you take them back without proper counseling. And introducing them to things that will take their minds off. What has happened and focus them on productive areas. Uh there will still be a problem. So uh we will go through that process with them. After we have, once the problem has been resolved, there will be stages. Uh where experts will be invited to do a lot of counseling. In some cases, where homes have been broken down, we may have to do reconstruction. And uh and rehabilitate them, look for ways to rehabilitate them and uh give them that. That deep feeling of security that, yes, they are back and they are back for good. So that a good number of them have abandoned their homes, they don't farm. So even the skills of farming over time, you lose touch. So they will still need to be put through all of that. And I believe that uh we. Once we get to that point, we'll be able to move them back to their places. Uh gradually.
All right. Thank you very much. Along those lines, you, you mentioned ensuring security by using high tech. And we learned last week that the government is refusing to approve the purchase of drones in Nigeria. What other high tech can you use if the government is allowing individuals or states to purchase them?
Well, I, I've not read the report. Incidentally, uh my company is one of the. Companies that is negotiating with uh foreign investors. Who are not only supplying drones to the military. But also intend to set up a factory for manufacturing of drones in Nigeria. Uh if there is uh restriction, it is. It is only for security purposes. If the purpose for which those drones will be deployed. Is well defined. And in our case, and that's why I say we will de-politicize this. So there won't be any reason why anybody will be thinking that my government acquiring drones. As of right to gather intelligence for con, reconnaissance. Uh we'll use it for anything that is anti-state. Once the cars are there on the table and the intention is clear, I think it will not be a big deal. It's one area that we're looking at very, very seriously because we have deep expertise in that. The other one we're also looking at is satellite, uh space satellite. We are also doing a similar thing with. Uh some agencies of government. And when I come into government as a governor of this state, we will tap into that. To get intelligence even from satellite. And I believe that if we deploy technology properly. We will resolve almost ninety percent of our security challenges. The problem has always been, has it been deployed properly? And has it been managed well? We will do it.
All right. Thank you very much. That's a wonderful answer. Now, switching gears a little bit, uh you introduced yourself as a businessman. And you know that no business in this world we try without electricity and power. So what is going to do about that? I know you mentioned it as part of one of your.
Yes. Yes, is uh in fact, one of the things that we intend to do as a state. To kickstart our industrialization uh policy. Is to acquire cheap and reliable energy sources. And one of the cheapest energy sources that is available, but somehow it has been played down. Is the natural gas uh pipeline, which for now. Only a few locations have had access to. We intend, by the special grace of God, when we come into government. Is to go into cooperation with neighboring states. Where we can, just like we are talking about the Nehemiah uh model. We will extend it beyond Benue and invite the other states to join us. Let them do part. Bring it to their state, from their state we will take it to our state, and from our state we give it to the next. I believe this is where the future lies for Nigeria to open up its economy. If we deploy the natural gas pipeline properly. We will not have any challenge with energy. The other one is uh the renewable sources which. We have in abundance, particularly solar. And I have also had the privilege as a businessman. Dealing with about three different manufacturers, some of the, the biggest manufacturers of uh solar panels and solar systems. And I know that it is something that we can deploy. It's not a big deal, but at times we mystify things in this country. So something that should be commonplace becomes a big deal. But when we come into government, we will make this. Available and in such a manner that we will be able to use that as a good source. To drive our economy and industrialization uh uh sector.
Thank you. That's, that's, that's very wonderful. Um just to circle back on this issue of natural gas, you said as governor, you will. Um try to bring about a pipeline. Can you explain, elaborate on that?
Yeah, you, you, uh there is a national pipe, uh natural gas. Project, which uh I don't have it here, but I, I have it, I've seen it. It flows from rivers, from Potacot. It goes through Enugu, Enugu goes to Kogi, Kogi. It goes to Abu, uh comes through Abuja, Abuja, it goes to Kaduna, Kaduna, it goes to Kanu, Kanu. Comes back through to Medugri. And it has left much of uh north central, north east. So Benue is not captured. And if. We mount treasure. Constructive treasure, giving reasons why this is beneficial to drive our economies. How we have to, my, my state, Benue, we go into discussions with. For instance, a state like Eboni, that is also planning to set up. Uh a cement factory, additional cement factory. To encourage that this moves from Enugu to Eboni. And from Eboni, we'll be able to say, okay. And from Eboni, we'll be able to say, okay, we will tap it. They will tap it to Benue. Here, if we have that extended to us, it can easily drive our lime and cement factory. It's not just a cement factory. It will be a lime and cement factory that we will be establishing. And then it will now resuscitate most of the moribund factories that we have littered across the state. This is the easiest way by which we can make Benue a manufacturing hub. Once we tap into this, we go into cooperation with the neighboring states because from here, we will talk to Nasarawa. Nasarawa will also say, ah, no, this thing is going to benefit also. So as it is coming from Eboni to Benue. Then where we extend it to Nasarawa. Nasarawa maybe plateau, we say, oh, no, they need it. So as a congregation of states, we can now put the necessary pressure on the federal government to get this extended to this area that has been left out. So presently, the natural gas project excludes us completely. But we will put pressure for government to bring it in. Because that will be the easiest way by which we can drive our economy.
Yeah, thank you very much. Now, let's switch gears to looking at the financial state of Benue State. Um, one of the biggest challenges we have in the state now is the issue of this wage pay is openly bloated. Um, what are you going to do about that? The issue of wage pay and ghost workers in Benue State?
Yes, uh, I have featured on radio programs and most of times callers. This is one area that I have an avalanche of questions. What do we do with payment of salaries? And my answer has always been, the first thing we will do when we come into government is to carry out an audit to know the workforce, the strength, the numbers that we have. Who are the actual workers? Whatever we can say now is in the field of speculation, and I don't want to speculate on numbers. Because the, the impounding numbers, I don't want to go into that. But I believe that when I come into government, nobody can lie to me. Because I will get an audit firm that we carry out a transparent audit. We know whether we have ghost workers. We know what the actual numbers are and what the actual wage pay is. It will be published. There is no reason why we should make this. Government is not a secret society. People should know, how much are you paying? Who are these workers? So we will do that. So once we are able to do that, we are certain that, okay, this is our actual wage pay. We will now look at, what do we have? And I have assured the people, including, uh, pensioners and workers that it's not going to be a quick fix, but it will be fixed and fixed completely. Because we will create uh, different sources of revenue generation. Presently, the state generates less than fifteen percent of what our needs are. You cannot have a government running practically on, uh, expectations from elsewhere without looking inwards. So one of the things, and that is where under the economic security, uh, uh, sector that we talked about earlier in our manifesto, some of the pillars of how we are going to generate funds to be able to tackle our needs, you know, uh, expanding the sources of, uh, revenue. We have, Benue is blessed, hugely blessed with solid minerals. You go around the state now, you see foreigners moving around our states. What are they doing? They are exploiting what we have. Our focus is on Abuja. Meanwhile, we have much here that if we concentrate and say, look, we need to know what God has blessed us with and how we can turn this into resources that will resolve our problems. We will not be begging. We will not be going, uh, to Abuja every month, capy hand, and then depending on that. The state cannot survive doing that. We are going to open up our economy. One area we're going to do that also is, we're going to create an economic free trade zone towards the Cameroon borders. We will open one of the biggest economic free trade zones that we will open that corridor for international trade. If we're talking of exporting, we should have easy ways by which we can export. So that place, one, the economic free trade zone that we're going to establish, which will be at the border with Cameroon. Fortunately, on the Cameroonian side, the northwest Cameroon, the governor general there is my very good friend. They are also trying to create a, a dry sea port. So with the dry sea port on their side and the economic free trade zone on our own side, we will be able to do international trade in such a way as to attract investors and do a lot of things that will promote our economy. So we are looking at it holistically in a manner that within two years, three years, the issue of payment of salaries will be a forgotten thing. People, it, it's not, I, I normally don't like to discuss it because it is a right of a worker. It's not a big deal for a governor to say, I have paid salaries. It's a more, it's a moral right. So it's not an achievement. So that's what we will do.
Okay, uh, so there's a follow-up question here. Let me just, uh, read it a bit about in here. But how often will the auditing be carried out? This is in regard to the audit you said you will carry out when you take over office? Uh, let me read it out before then you can, you can take over. Uh, how often will the auditing be carried out? It's possible that those who added the ghost workers might see add after an audit. What would be, what would be a more sustainable, uh, sustainable way of fostering future occurrences?
Yes, the, the
How often? Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, uh, well, you see, everything depends on the leadership. You see, if I am at the helm and I don't give anyone any notion that I am playing pranks, nobody, the moment a report is submitted and we know that from, say, September of twenty twenty-three, we established that we have X number of workers. Now, from that point onwards, if anybody is going to bring anything plus or minus two percent, I will put a question mark. Because if employment is going to be opened, I, as a governor, we know exactly what numbers of employment slots we have opened and where. So as that is done, we are going to computerize everything. So it's, it's going to be something that, uh, it will be difficult for anybody to just sit and manipulate. And, uh, it will be managed, uh, in such a manner that yes, we will not do it frequently because there won't be any need for, to say every three months or every six months. But if need arises, if I have any question in my mind at any given point in time, that these numbers don't seem right. Because I will always refer it to that X number. So plus or minus highest five percent. If over time, the numbers are bigger than what we have quoted, somebody will have to explain to me to understand. And it is at that point that I can have a review. You know, it could be a year, it could be two years. But for now, I can't say because I will try as much as possible to stay in that tight. It, this, this is a cartel. That business is a cartel. I will break the cartel. So nobody, once you break the backbone, because when you don't play the game with them, they don't have any godfather. So I will break that in a manner that nobody can have numbers on their fingertips. The system will be very clear. Once you punch the, the computers, you know exactly where employment was, uh, done. And if people have retired, because there should always be retirement and, uh, employment. It cannot always be on the increase. Meanwhile, you are retiring people, but the numbers are not going down. So that's why I say give and take. We would always know. But if need be, we, we will do the review.
Thank you for the answer. Speaking of numbers, do you know how much Benue State is owing now? And what can you do as a candidate to, uh, relieve Benue of this burden?
Well, I, it is also in the sphere of speculation because the numbers that are unconfirmed is to the tune of about a hundred and fifty billion. And, uh, I believe that some of the plans we have put in place, the policies that will come into place, we give us the opportunity to gradually first, we will look at those deaths. And I will question the ones that don't look right. Even if there are legal impediments to it, we will fight it. Because, uh, finance houses should not go about giving loans without backing them up. If you give a loan, say a loan for construction of roads, and you as the financier, even though, yes, you are giving this money to the state, it also requires of you to ensure that the purpose for which that loan was collected has been, uh, done. So if somebody collected a loan to do roads and there are no roads, and you say I should pay, well, I will look at it legally and I will challenge it where need be. And, uh, if at the end of the day, it's being uh, declared that, well, we have to pay, yes, we will pay. We will look for money and pay.
So that is a question, where will you get the money to pay these loans?
Well, I have just enumerated to you that, one, we are going to open up our economy. We are going to expand sources of revenue generation. We have, uh, I've just told you part of what we do in terms of, uh, looking at, uh, the, the, the solid mineral deposits, uh, trying to attract investors, go into partnership with them. As a businessman, I have, uh, a lot of partner, partner, uh, partners across the globe, some of whom are more than happy to come and invest under the right security environment, which is why I say if we are able to resolve our security challenges, every other thing can fall in place very, very easily. So once we are, we, we tap into that, we will start to attract investment. Uh, a good number of states are attracting investment, but you need the right policies. Uh, in the course of discussing, uh, with people, uh, who have done business in Benue, some of the challenges, most talk about multiple taxation, uh, very unfriendly policies. We will look at all of the policies. The idea is, we will try as much as possible to attract investors who will come and invest. In some cases, we go into partnership with them. In others, we will do a test case to run some of those businesses to the point where success will be evident. Because I do not believe that government should classify itself as a bad manager of business. It depends on who is at the helm. And if I am at the helm in Benue, we will set it on record that government is a good manager of business and will run most of the businesses successfully.
Okay, thank you. Uh, still along the same, same line of questioning. Um, so you understand that Benue is in debt. We're also owing salaries and then there are the issue of pensioners.
Yes.
Now, most of these solutions that you're proposing now will not take off on day one. You will need time and resources to be able to set them up.
Yeah.
So how are you going to resolve the issue of pensioners and non-payment of salaries? Why tackling these things at the same time?
Well, like I said, first, uh, the issue of pensioners, one will also have to look at, uh, it under the same, uh, audits, uh, uh, panel, we will look at how much exactly are we owing? Some of the pensions, uh, that the, I, I understand, some of them are not even much. So the ones that, once the report confirms that they are clean, we are certain the figures, we will be able to now maybe graduate the payment. I can promise that, oh, we are going to clear it under one month or under two months. But once the report comes in, we will know how much it is we are owing. We will look at how much we have, what we are expecting against the background of what we intend to do to open up the economy so that we can start generating. So once we get that done, we will give it priority. Because there is actually no logical reason why, uh, it's morally, morally not right to say that you are owing people ten, thirteen months. I, I, I don't understand it. But maybe I will understand it better when I get there and I know how much this costs, how much this is. And then we'll be able to match it. Maybe over a period of time, we will pay and clear it. One of the, like for pension, uh, one of the biggest challenges is that government does not have a plan. And even where government, uh, has had plans for payment of pensioners, they have not followed them. So for instance, when people are making, uh, uh, contributions into their pension savings, government is supposed to also be making the same saving that for the day when these people exit from where these monies can be drawn. We know that what has happened is that government has not been keeping that. Much as, much of it has gone into other things. So anytime, uh, someone is due for retirement, government now has to start running here and there, looking for where to mop up money. So it's like you're robbing Peter to pay Paul. That has to stop. We will put in place a proper pension. I know there is already a, 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 a pension, uh, payment system that is not being strictly followed. We will look at it, we will review it and see how we can improve on it. So that the savings that are made will not be warehoused by government. We will look for instance, for an independent, uh, administrator who will manage that. Whatever we are supposed to contribute, we will send it to the administrator. So when somebody retires, he has no business coming to the organization in government saying, oh, pay us. You'll be directed to go straight there. So we will review that in such a way that government takes his hands off. And the temptation to always touch that money and say, oh, let's do this, we are now ready for retirement. So we can take their money, where money comes, we'll repay. I say, oh, let's do this, we are not yet ready for retirement, so we can take their money, where money comes, we will replace it. That has always been the problem. So that is going to stop. When we get an independent administrator who will manage that and going forward. We will not have a situation where when people retire, they now start struggling. To pay, to get paid for what they should have been paid without sweat.
Thank you very much, sir. Um I just want to add this comment here. That this is on record. Uh you started by saying that this would be the Benue, the Nehemiah model. This is a very good idea. And we will keep this. Uh once you come into office, we will hold you to this. This is a very good idea, establishing an independent agency to take care of all of these things. Now, we're gonna switch a little bit from here and. Uh one of the other issues that we faced in Benue is the issue of local governmental autonomy. So there's a question here that what is your opinion about this? And second to that is that if elected governor, would you allow uh local government elections to be free and fair?
I have always been an advocate of. Uh openness in governors and in the election of. Public office holders. I will uphold that to the letter. And I want to be held accountable. When I get into government, one of the first things one will do is to make government transparent. Give people the opportunity to bring in their best. Local government is one area if we. Give the leaders at that level the free heart to run. Much of the pressure that we have on state will not be there. Much of it will not be there. So I intend to run it. I intend to run it uh uh run the local government system. Independent of the state. The only thing there would be that they will be under scrutiny. As much as I will not allow the state to touch their money. Every cobble that comes in for local government use will be used for that local government. But I will set in place a committee there of locals, including traditional rulers. Youth, community leaders, women, who will oversee what is happening. So for instance, if a local government, every month you have maybe uh one hundred million. One hundred million, tell us what you want to do with it. In your local government, because you have local governments that. The road, if you go in and see what is there, it's appalling. And you wonder, is there a government here? So we will challenge them. The communities will be there. Their money will be used in the local government. So the second part of your question is about transparency in running a local government.
Free and fair elections, yes.
Free and fair elect one hundred percent. I have always said, let the people decide. And under my administration, the people of Benue for the first time. They will decide who becomes a local government representative. Without the influence of the governor, without the influence of any big politician. As long as we are there. People, we have the free choice to select those whom they want to represent them. As long as it is within my party, well, whatever it is they do in the other parties. I cannot decide that in my own party. People will be allowed freely to contest. And there will be no interference even with other parties when the election is held. If another party has won, by all means declare them. That is a people's choice. We will honor it, we will respect it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Uh along the same lines, um can you give our kings and traditional uh traditional rulers autonomy? There's a lot of government.
Yes, I I in the course of my consultations, I went around the entire state. I met with almost all the traditional rulers. In the Tishpikin area, in the Doma, even the Tulos, the Igadis, I have met most of them. And I gave them the assurance. That when I become the governor of a state, one area that my administration will look up to them. To provide solutions is the area of land disputes. They are the repositories of our history, culture. They know a lot about these matters. They are in a better position to tell. Who owns a particular piece of land, the history behind it, so they can resolve it. So if these things are done without interference. With, you know, from the powers, the political big powers in Macodi. I think most of the problems that we have in the local areas will be sorted out. If the traditional rulers are allowed to look at things without fear or favor. And they do it with the fear of God. We will give them that autonomy. That is one area of autonomy that I have already told. Most of them that we visited, that we will give them autonomy to decide land matters. And we give them all the legal backing for that.
Okay, and if if you come into power. How can you ensure that the tortive is not dependent on the on on government house? For day-to-day running of the tortive palace.
Okay, well, that presupposes that he is dependent on government house. I don't know about that, but.
Wait, isn't the the salary coming from the government house?
Well, I don't know what the law says, but uh. The the assurance is that. We are need be will look at the legal. We'll look at the 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 legal status of. How the payment is supposed to be made. Uh whether they need autonomy. For them to have direct payment coming directly to them. Uh that will be something that will be looked into, but I don't think that uh. My government will want to. Uh hold the traditional institutional hostage on the issue of payment of salaries.
Yes.
We will give them autonomy if. That requires legal backing to give them that assurance of independence. Of uh giving them the the capacity to be able to. Uh preside over matters. Uh independent of government, yes, we will give them that. And for sure, the tortive is highly revered, not only the tortive. But the other uh traditional rulers, the Ochidoma. And the other ones will give them the respect their office deserves. And salary will never be an issue where we will hold them hostage.
Yeah. Thank you very much, sir. Um. Uh let me mention here that there are some comments in the chat here. Some of them are not questions, but I believe they will be good for you. So after this, we will send them to you. Good advice. Um I pray that you heed to them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um I will be, after this question, I will hand over to the secretary to take over the the uh the moderation. My last question to you, yeah, my last question to you is that what can you do to improve access to quality education? And how will we finance it?
Ah. A lot. Quality education, we. One of the first things to look at is the infrastructure. It's quite, quite heartbreaking where you visit some of. The schools, some of us attended, they are more like I saw. So first. One would address the issue of the infrastructure. In most of. Our primary, secondary, if our public schools. We will do everything to upgrade them to the point where we look back. What we experience, we we should have our little ones also enjoy public schools. The idea where everybody runs into the private schools. These are private schools that are run by individuals. Why should they be better than government schools? Why? So we will make it more attractive and even very, very highly competitive with the private schools. That will require funding. We will. Some of the areas where we are looking at improving our revenue sources of revenue generation. We will deploy much of the revenue into education, because like I said. Uh education is key to almost everything. And for us to move. We need to give serious priority to education, particularly in the sciences. Technical and vocational uh education. So a lot of our resources will go in there. And hopefully, within a very short time. Our public schools will become reference points where people will no longer. Be looking at the private schools as the main attraction. So essentially, that is part of what we will do uh to. Give access to quality education, uh improving the infrastructure. And of course, we also go into partnership with uh. Uh a good number of NGOs and even uh foreign institutions that. Want to partner with the local ones, that's talking about the tertiary institutions. Uh we'll go into that, particularly in specialized areas. Uh like uh. The sciences, we can go into good partnership with most of these following universities uh or institutions. So that's essentially what we will do and uh to grant uh. Uh access to quality education. What we have now is not what we should be proud of. And it will be a major turnaround when we come in.
Thank you. So that was the second part to that question. How would you finance it?
Yes, the financing, uh we. For this, the the primary, the uh secondary, the technical, vocational. It will be direct financing from government generated from uh. The revenue that we will generate locally. Most of the areas that I have mentioned previously, we are going to within. Uh a span of two years, we should turn around our economy. We should become a net exporter of so many things. We should be attracting investors in here. To stimulate our economy, where the industrialization platform will be opened. There will be huge activities going on. Government will tap into this and of course. When the revenue comes, how do we manage it? We manage it frugally. In a manner that we apply it to those areas that we look at as priority. And education happens to be one. So once the revenue is generated from these sources that we have mentioned. Is how we are pushing it, that education takes a big chunk. And the idea is to improve on the infrastructure uh greatly. Uh for for the higher institutions. Yes, like I said, they can also go into. Uh partnership. I have a cluster of universities abroad. And this is something I know that is very, very common with you in the diaspora. There are a good number of universities that uh can go into some. Exchange programs that uh will bring new skills even to. Uh our students here and even the teaching uh staff. We expose them to uh new methods of uh. Uh learning modes. And I believe that uh over time. These things will crystallize into. A standard that will be comparable to any. Any of the institutions around the world, because they will be comparing those with their their peers uh over there. So. Those are the areas that we. We can also uh improve the quality of uh of uh. Our education, you know, comparative to what we have over there. I've lost you. Hello, I've lost you.
Uh Mr. VP, uh you're muted. Did you wanna unmute? Okay, I think I will, I will just go over the next uh set of questions. Uh thank you, Mr. VP, for um moderating so far. And uh thank you, Mr. Joe Wire, for um answering the questions um beautifully so far. And presenting uh your manifesto to us. Um so. I have one question that is kind of um typical for me. I want to know, do you have a blueprint? For um the people within the state that live with disability. And um how are you going to address their plight or challenges? So that they feel as part of the society, because what we noticed. Over here in the U S, um people living with disability are prioritized. Be it in receiving services or getting accommodations when they need to be either at work or at school. Or whatever. Um but at home, back home, um they get relegated. And you know, it's not somebody's fault that they had an accident or maybe they were born a certain way. Um what are you going to do to um carry them along?
Yes, thank you for the question. Uh it's a question I've been asked a couple of times by the physically challenged. And visually impaired. And I've assured them that uh. This is, this will be a government that will embrace all. They are no less than the rest of us. The only challenge they've had, which is not their making. Is that they are physically challenged. And visually impaired in some cases. And when. They want to access certain services. Provision is not usually made to cover them. I have traveled far and wide and I know. In societies that give everyone a sense of belonging. Provisions are made for that. It's unfortunate that here in Nigeria and most of Africa, we hardly do that. But I have already assured them, and some of them are already on my campaign team. And I've said that. Yes, I will treat them specially, but not. To make them feel that it's because they are. to make them feel that it's because they are disadvantaged. No, they are not. They are just like us, but we will make sure that services that they can also access with ease are made available. It is a right that they, the government owes them. And my government will ensure that provision is met first to carry them along. By appointing them in the right places, because when they are appointed in some of these places, they can also speak better in defense of their issues. So uh we will do a lot to cover them in regards to provision of services uh that relate to them.
Yeah, thanks for answering that question. Um there's a question here in the chat. Um, somebody is asking, what can you do to improve property tax in the state?
Okay, uh I am not sure there is a property tax in Benue because much of, and is 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 one area that government may be losing revenue. We have a similar situation in Abuja, the federal capital. You have a situation where people build houses, they are using uh is uh uh houses are like a conduit for people to hide their resources. And they do it, they do it uh in a manner that most find a bit repulsive because you see most of the houses are unoccupied, even though we as as a people are hugely underhoused by United Nations uh Index for uh Development uh requirement of houses in in Nigeria in particular. We see uh about forty million on the house in Nigeria. Yet, if you go to some of our state capitals, you see houses that are built and have not been occupied for years. And people do that simply because they don't pay tax on these houses. All they know is that you build a house, you keep it. If somebody buys it from you, you make money. If they don't buy it, you don't feed the house, it stays here. Nobody is charging you tax for it. But I think is one area we as a government will look at very critically when we come in. First, we're going to take uh a housing uh 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 numbers. We we take the the, what's the right word? We we take the the we take count of all the houses and in some cases, in fact, for each uh of the urban uh local governments, we are going to undertake property identification. Each property will be numbered and identified and recorded. So we will take that inventory of all of this. So it will be a lot easier for us when we want to apply uh tax, which is normal. It will be very, very easy for us to do that. So it's one of the things that we will do when we come into government. Uh taking uh count of all of the 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 houses, particularly in the urban, urban areas of our state.
Thank you for that. Um so I think as far as the questions that were already um sent and also the ones in the chat, um we've been able to go over them in exhaust. So I I think at this time, we might just allow people, if that's okay, to feel free to ask questions. Now, I I would just give a quick reminder that we want to ask the candidate uh questions that are related to his manifesto and we want to be as courteous and respectful as we can. So um yeah, feel free to either raise your hand or unmute yourself. Um Mr. Zuma has his hand raised. I can physically see him. Please unmute yourself, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Thank you, Mr. Wyer. Uh, nice to meet you in the daytime. Uh the last time I was on a Zoom call with you, it was at night, so I didn't see you very well. Um Joseph Zuma here, I'm a university teacher. Um, one of the things that worries me when I go home is seeing all the touch houses, the huts that our people live in. Uh I was born in one of those. And the manner of constructing those has remained the same. And you see those huts in Boko, the way they wear back in the eighties when we were going to secondary school. And so to see touch houses in the city in the twenty first century, but beyond that, to see our people still living in huts in scattered places uh all over uh the land, which also sometimes makes them uh prime targets for herdsmen because of the manner that they settle. So I guess the question is going to be like, uh what is your thought about the current uh settlement pattern in Thimland? And is is there anything you think that can be done to restructure the way our people uh settle these days in such a way that uh government can uh extend modern amenities to those people. So a resettlement plan in the villages. Uh the other part is um if I feel ashamed of seeing touch houses in Boko, the headquarters of Thimland, in Katsunala, in uh Otopo and those places. Uh as a sitting governor, uh would this concern you? That, you know, our prime cities are still littered with uh with huts. Uh what can you do to change this situation or maybe to um encourage innovation among our young uh people who can help to to change some of these dynamics? Thank you.
Thank you very much, my namesake. Uh I I would take the second one first because it also touches me deeply. When I move around Makodi, the state capital, and I see touch houses littered across the state capital, right in the center, is is a reflection of poverty. Are we the poorest amongst the lot? I don't think so. Is it a theme of culture that we cannot let go even with the modernization, so to speak, that has caught up with us? It is something that government should address and is one area that I have kept to my chest. But since you have brought it on the phone, I will answer you directly. My plan is that when I become governor, within one year, we will encourage everyone who has a touch house to change them. We will make provision, if it is loan facility, we will give so that people who have these houses can peel. And we will supervise it. We will give you the plans, how it will be done, so that nobody carries that money to go and marry more wives. So it's part of what we have in mind to do because it's it's laughable. Because when people hold on to it and say, well, it's one of the cultural relics we should be proud of. I said, no. Uh it shouldn't be. If we want to make that a cultural relic, we can have places where we can do that as a museum, where people can, when visitors or tourists come, they go to such places where that they want to go and eat in those huts or they want to go and snap pictures or do, but not where people are living. We have had cases where mud houses and touch houses have collapsed and killed people. There is no justification that we should allow that to happen now. And in any case, God has already given us a good reason why we should not even be using that in this age. We have the largest deposit of limestone where we are producing cement. We shouldn't be building mud houses. We have a roof tie that we can produce uh uh is a roof uh type uh factory that we are going to resuscitate here. So people should embrace this. We have uh the Otopo burn bricks that we can, if we want to associate with culture, we can use burn bricks. It's good. There are many advantages of doing that. So we are looking at doing that when we come into government. But it will be, we will do it in such a way that is gradual, but within a year we'll do it. We are not going to stop that there. You know, along the street, you know, people have built uh houses in open places that are not safe for human habitation. Would be a bit hard and professional when we come in to ensure that particularly in the open spaces, where buildings are coming up for public use. Whether they are privately owned, they must follow approved plans. So there will be a lot of reconstruction here and there when we come in. A good number of places we go, but we will do it in such a way that people don't think it is is, we are not going to be uh mean. It's going to be, let's get the best for our state to look nice when people visit. Now, in the rural areas where the settlement of our people, uh the first question you talked about, you know, the challenge has been that our people are basically farmers. And they love this idea of land acquisition for the purpose of farming. So they like to live sparsely, where you you just settle here alone with your family and you're surrounded with parcels of land where you can do your farming. And then that becomes a soft target, like you said, when these external aggressors come. They see that in a space of maybe three square kilometers, there is nobody. It's just one one family. They can take on one family. But if you live in a community where the pattern of settlement is well defined, it will also give you security, it will give you the right protection. You can still do your farming. So this is where we will encourage the ru- the the traditional rulers to introduce this in such a manner that the communities will see that it is for their common good. Nobody is coming to take their land by force. No, the idea is that live in clusters where if anything happens, you are protected. You know that even if you shout, the next compound, somebody is there, you know, ready to help. So that is one of the areas that I believe the traditional rulers will help to remodel our settlement arrangements.
Uh thanks, Ken, uh thanks, um Mr. Candidate. Pardon me using that. Um for for that uh answer. I I can see in the comment section, someone says, in Northern Euro, it is rich people who live in touch houses. And then it continues to say, a lot of beautiful resorts in Southern Africa use stacked houses. I have stayed in some. Stacked houses are not a problem in themselves, but the inability to improve the technology, design and aesthetics. Um I think, um you know, you had talked, you had touched on, uh you know, I think the structural integrity, you gave example of like some people were killed when a touch house fell. You know, but I think this person is also kind of giving an um another view to, you know, the the beauty, because um there's there's some value also to stacked houses. Um you may agree with it. Um feel free to to add on if you would like before we take the next question.
Yeah, well, uh I think he has said it all, like like I explained. They, we are not saying touch houses are bad. But if you look at, if you do a comparison between what we have here and what he's talking about in South Africa, there is a wide difference in the way the 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 architecture that is used is different and the mold of construction. For instance, here, you see is the is practically mud that is used and then attached. Even these days, even getting the right grass is a problem. And in some, if you go, not like the touch houses of old where even if you raise heavily, you will not feel anything. The ones that you have around here now, you see some people sleeping and water is dripping all over. So it's not even very healthy. And that is the point we are making, uh that we should make progress. We can have these touch houses, yes, as our cultural relics uh in strategic places like parks. We intend to re uh resuscitate the the park at Igbo, where visitors can come if they want to sleep in touch houses. It will be done in such a manner that, yes, they will love it. It will be nice. And in places where maybe uh specific areas for entertainment. Like I know the artists who have similar ones where when they are hosting foreign dignitaries, you know, who visit them, they see the touch houses that they have there in Abuja. But it's just for what we are talking about here is is not held for human habitation, most of them that we have here in in our urban uh areas. So we will prefer at least, if we are going to improve on that, we will do that.
Thank you. So yeah, um I'd seen my uncle raise up his hand earlier. Um, my uncle, Professor Yenaga Igba.
Yes.
Over to you, sir.
Can you, I I apologize for for coming in late. I was driving from New Jersey to Washington D C and I just got here, so I apologize. So my question, if you have already answered it, you can move on. And then I have another one. The role of Totev in Thimland, how do you make him independent so that he can tell us the truth? How do you make him independent so that he can tell us the truth without fear of being kicked out?
Hello? Hello? Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
Well, I think maybe there was a little bit of a connection issue, but if, I think his first question was quite clear about, uh, um, how you can to make Totev, uh, independent.
Yeah, first of all. Uh, do we have answered this before? Hello? Hello? Hello?
So, Bayo, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
I was a meeting with the Totev and the minister, another first class chief. In a, in a, in a meeting where they would have just told the person who was wrong that he was wrong. And the Totev and the other chiefs of first class chiefs couldn't just come out and, uh, tell them that. And you know, Totev being a VC twice. And being there, you would expect that, uh, he would tell them that this is it. But it seems to me as, uh, it is because he is answerable to a commissioner. Now, as a governor. Uh, Professor Ku told me a lot about what you could do and all of that, and as a governor, what could you do? What do you, would you suggest to make that role in a way that they can come out and speak and say, yeah, this is it? Without fear of being kicked out of that position or is there nothing you can do? That's number one. But two, we have a lot of minerals that it again, and was yet, uh, bars, you mentioned the, uh, lime, the, the, the cement. What would you do to, uh, get these things out there so that our people will stop, uh, being beggars? If you have answered all of this, I apologize, but I was on the way, so I didn't hear you answer, I will go back. If you answered, I'll go back and listen to what you said, but these are the two questions I have for now.
No, thanks very much. No, there are questions that, uh, even if I have answered. We, 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 we should still reflect on them because they are quite, uh, important. The role of the Totev is our revered, uh, traditional ruler number one. I think the approach for us as a government would be not to allow any traditional ruler dabble into politics. We will not require of them to be involved whether, uh, as a government or as a party. They have independence of decision-making with regards to areas that they have authority on, and we will respect their opinion. I think in most cases, the fear of what the repercussions of saying the truth might be is what makes them not stand up to what is expected of them. We will remove that fear that they are independent as far as these, these, these areas. We have talked about the area of land matters. Uh, the issue you referred to, I don't know what it is, but if it involves politicians, I will not drag them into political issues. To come and settle politicians. Because no matter how they do. The other one will always accuse them of taking sides. Politicians should learn to sort their problems out and leave traditional rulers alone. If it is a matter that is traditional in its nature, maybe it is for peace. Across that has nothing to do with partisanship, that may not be interpreted to mean they are doing it for certain reasons. Yes. Uh, if any of their children, for instance, maybe one belongs to party A, the other one party B, they have an issue. And that issue is likely to bring disunity within the entire community. Yes, by right, they can call them to order. So we will, one of the areas we will also look at is when you appoint, for instance, a Totev. I will look at a way by which it will be impossible for a governor to with the stroke of a pen. Call for the suspension or the removal of a king. We will look at the legal, uh, uh, status, what it requires. What gives them that independence? Because as long as the governor is the one calling the shots. Even where the governor does not, uh, gets involved, the fear will always be that if this goes against the governor's position, what will be the repercussion? So most of times, they will be minded by that. So, uh, uh, to answer your question directly once again, is to look at ways by which we will give them independence of judgment over matters that are within their page. And the Totev in the chairman of the traditional, the Benwe Traditional Council. We will look at how we can give them independence to make decisions. And, uh, we'll also make it very, very difficult. Very, very difficult for anyone to just wake up and say they are suspending them. Uh, the legal, uh, bottlenecks that will lead to that will be, will be put in place. Then with regards to the solid minerals we've talked about, yes, we've talked about it, we have a huge deposit of solid minerals and the places you've mentioned, we know exactly what we have. Uh, part of what we said earlier was that we were going to tap in from our, uh, s- huge source of investors who are more than happy to come and invest. Hello? Hello?
Uh, please go ahead.
Yes, so, uh, we have, uh, quite a number of, uh, uh, investors who are more than willing, but we said earlier that, uh, in order to attract investment in these areas, our security must be first tackled. We must be, uh, uh, have, uh, peace in the state. We must tackle the issue of insecurity, the high, uh, level of crime that we presently have. And, uh, once we are able to do that, uh, foreign investors who have the capital to come and invest in some of this will be more than happy to come. Uh, we're looking at, uh, we talked about, uh, setting up a new lime and cement factory. And I know, uh, Yenaga had he is stinted in this area, so he knows exactly, I understand what the situation is, but we are looking at setting that up once we come into government. And, uh, we all know what Benwe Cement did. And the one we are going to set up will be almost five times better than what Benwe Cement is or was.
Hmm.
That is one. We are also going, we talked about, uh, uh, other mineral deposits that we have, that we can take, uh, huge advantage of. We, I know I did a mineralogical survey, uh, years back. In Benway and Taraba. And I know we have quite a number of mineral deposits in large, you know, commercial quantity that we can with the right, uh, investors coming in. And there are a few that are already around, even though they are doing it illegally. But we will make sure that nobody takes advantage of our state. Everything must be done and done right. Even though it's a right of the federal government to, to give licenses, but the land, we own the land. So if anybody is coming to exploit anything here, it must be with our knowledge. And, uh, we will look at all the, the legal requirements. Uh, where we can set up directly, some of these, uh, uh, concerns. We will do, where we can do it in partnership with, uh, investors. We will do that, but we will create a neblin environment where business will thrive. We talked about, uh, the, the Economic Free Trade Zone that we are going to set up. Where a good number of these things could also be done within that area for export. So there will be such, uh, the, we have activities that will be able to put money in the hands of our people so that they stop begging, so that politicians stop taking advantage of them. And we will be a state that will be refreshed as having broken that chase of poverty.
Thank you, thank you so much for, um, that. Um, I will in a moment hand over, or, uh, I see the, um, Mr. President raising his hand. I just wanted to read something from the chat. Um, it's not really a question, but somebody, uh, writing says, what I don't understand is the role of Ute. Why are the tools and butare not enough? All I hear about is Ute pressuring local government chairman for their personal needs, including demanding palaces be built for them. Um, I mean, I, I believe you've already touched on that and your approach, what you intend to do. Um, so, yeah, this person is just, um, expressing on their thinking, and I mean, it might just be an idea for you to think of.
I, I, I think he is thinking aloud and, uh, what I will say is that yes, at times it is good to have the numbers of community leaders across all areas. If we use, put them to the right uses. I believe they are an advantage, not a disadvantage. Uh, if we are going to downsize. The area that we should be looking at downsizing is, uh, the political space, space, uh, or public, public offices. Uh, where we have so many that are taking a lot from governments. You have a retinue of, uh, political hangars on, given different names. And, uh, with little or no job being done, but they are paid from public offers. The traditional rulers, if we deploy them well, we have a lot of issues that, uh, believe the at the clan level, at the district level, at the level of intermediate, uh, traditional council. Uh, I, I, I think we can resolve a lot of things. So many things can be done, peace. It can be handled very well, that, that security. And once you have a place that is well secured because, uh, people who should speak to the right people are there doing their job. Uh, development now becomes easy. So for me, I don't have much of a problem with the tools and, uh, battery and, uh, the, the tea. You know, the, they have roles, but maybe we can still define it properly. Because at every level, things happen. So we, we can put it in proper perspective so that they know exactly what they should be doing. And where they are not doing it, they can be cautioned appropriately.
Right. Um, thank you so much for that. Um, Mr. President, I will beg your pardon, there was a question that I, I kind of skipped and I just want to make sure I address it before the chat goes past it. Um, and this person says, but there are no examples a- anywhere in the world where government businesses are successful. Are you proposing that you will do what no government in the world has been able to do?
Okay. I give you a classic. I, I think that is not wholly correct. Let's take the Dubai model. The success of what today is called Dubai, that everybody hooves around, is called the business hub of the Middle East. Is government, much of what goes on there is driven by government. They lay the framework upon which businesses have come in and flourish. And it's a successful model. I have done business, I have an office in Dubai, I have run business there, and I know that that government is a success in virtually every sector that they have handled. The construction of the tallest building. They took a loan, the government there took a loan to build it. It's a success story. Everybody goes there to see, they've, uh, they've, uh, met other uh, successful adventures which have paid off. So, and coming from a business background. For instance, I do not see, look at, for instance, look at Ethiopia. The Ethiopian airline, it's a successful model. Once upon a time Nigeria was running one of the most successful airlines in the, in the world. But corruption set in and things started to collapse. But Nigerian Airways was a success story initially. Today Ethiopian Air, airline, it's a success story. In fact, they are acquiring more and more, it's run by a government. So this notion that government is not a good manager of business is a lie. It's only people who want to uh, I, I, I want to be modest. Who want to shortchange government. That will say, oh, well, you know, this business government can never be successful in it. Who says government cannot never be successful? In Benway here, Benway links is a success story. Even with the challenges it has. But it only needs to be perfected, you have a right management in place. It will be turned around to something else. So we will set an example here in Nigeria to show people that government can and will be a, a good manager of business. In most of the things we will do, we'll prove it. We will lead by example, we will do the things that business people do and succeed. Who is government? Government is people. It's only those who wear the face of deceit. Because if you don't hire people who should do things right, why would you expect success? You are hiring somebody because he's your, he's your niece, or he's your cousin, or he's your relation. With all the inadequacies he or she has. Why will you be expecting success? A businessman who wants to succeed will never go and hire somebody who cannot give him the right result. So we will hire on merit. And we will demand, we'll go into a contract with people who accept to take positions. The guideline will be there, this is what is expected of you. If you don't do it, we, we hire as much as we hire, we fire. So it won't be something that somebody will bring sentiments and say, oh, well, he fired me because I belong to this party or I belong. No, those sentiments will not work with us. We will demand for results, and if we don't see results. It's like a board. It's like a board, if a board sits and you keep telling stories. And they are not seeing their balance sheet well, he's not giving them what they want. They fire you, whether you are the CEO or whatever, they fire you. And that's why I forgot to mention. I, Joseph Weyer, I am signing a social contract with the people of Benewa. That the people of Benewa should hold me on account of this, 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 this that I have promised, that I will do. If within my first term, I don't measure up, there is no reason why Benewa people should give me a second term. It's not sentiments. People should be able to be judged on account of their performance. We believe so much in emotions and therefore at the end of the day. There will be failures and people will still be saying, oh, no, it's because government cannot do it. If you have promised that you can do something and you don't deliver, get fired. Like somebody said, we will deal with insecurity, we will deal with corruption, we will turn around the economy. They have not done it in eight years. Why are we still looking at them? Why? So people are what their leadership uh is. If you demand the best from your leadership, you will get the best results. So we we set an example in Benewa that Benewa can do business as a government and it will succeed.
Thank you. Um uh I will ask Mr. President to mute. Uh Mr. President, you have your hands up.
Uh yes, um I I just have a question about uh. Uh is the same, practically the same question or similar to the question that uh. Uh Professor Zuma asked earlier, and that is uh uh. The issue of settlements uh in in Benewa State or general Nigeria. Uh these past settlements, I believe, are not good for commercial agriculture. Uh because crop spraying or dusting, in the in the event of an outbreak of insects or crop disease would be practically impossible. Uh given that uh our people are displaced, they are in IDP camps. And the government, your government, has plans of resettling them. Can the can the government use the opportunity to collaborate with traditional rulers? To educate our people on the benefit of settling in larger groups. So that they can be able to benefit from uh government security services as well as amenities. And free the land for commercial agriculture. On, I mean, because we're an agrarian state. Uh what do you have to say or what can your government do about something like that?
Yes, you said it right, and we discussed it earlier. We said this is what. We will advise the traditional rulers to encourage our people to do. Because there is security in numbers, in coming together, living in clusters. So that it helps to secure the people and also for better planning of uh government. Uh amenities to them, it makes a lot of sense. And like you rightly said, even for commercial uh agricultural production. So is one of the things that we would be uh requiring from our traditional rulers to help us do. Uh educate the people, uh remove the notion that, oh, they are taking their land, no. The essence is to secure them, the essence is to bring. Uh closer to them amenities that would have been almost impossible. If they continue to live sparsely. So, yes, we will have that legal framework. To make it one of the areas that traditional rulers will deeply be looking at uh. Doing the 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 settlement model that most of these people uh need. Possibly when they they return back to their ancestral homes. Most of those who are living in IDP camps today.
Thank you. Um so I see two has raised up, um I I think. Uh I'll take. You you, I'm sorry, over saying, your thing says MTI one. After that, um Professor Taohuli.
Yeah, uh the the issue of land tenure, somebody who has been. Uh what can I speak to? Uh can I speak to?
Yes, why not?
Okay. Somebody who has been about uh uh expertise in the area of land tenure. It be an opportunity to to trying to map in your ear locate. And this is where I believe the traditional rulers are going to come in very handy. For land tenure, those things should be decided at a traditional level. And then I will go to code. Those things should be decided at the traditional level. And once that is decided, you then survey. There can be a basis, we even turn to a bank and go whole long. But we need, uh as you correctly pointed out, the president. Who changing our settlement system so that if free in year. We will learn, you know, commercial farming. Once that is done, the role of the traditional rulers is even going to be more important in terms of. Ensuring that this land tenure system is done well properly. I um but add the necessary documentation. Uh or something as opposed to seeing more interactive fighting and increasing the insecurity in the land. That's just a comment I wanted to pass.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh. Do I respond in Tivo in English?
Or so, Jin San.
At least, at least. I saw one person here who is not Tivo, I saw a name I recognized that is not Tivo. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so uh then let me do justice. By maybe answering part of it in Tivo and then the other in English. Uh for do fishy. Young them discuss via traditional rulers. One of the biggest problems. And don't make. You also, I also again. That because you enjoy again. He through the right processes. Aqua la, got a major problem. So more. At all, I see. I did again. Hundred years. Chinese, you have in the UK, Britain, lease, Hong Kong. Youngen do a hundred years, it's a big deal. But nineteen ninety seven, finally, finally, they had to return that we are back, that territory back to China. So, see encouraged, you also. I also again. It trace at to quality. So, me me, sit your head. See resolve, so that I also particularly. But I agree with you completely that uh. The issue of land, particularly settlement in our. Local areas has to be revisited and handled properly by traditional rulers. Because like I said earlier, they they are the repository of our history. Our culture, they know much of this. And how some of these things can be handled without problems. They are in a better position to do that. So if we return to the agenda, so to speak. Of how our people used to handle land issues. Where the locals, the tra- the community leaders will sit down and say, no, they will trace a particular piece of land. To a family for generations. And say these people came, they were just giving a parcel of land to farm. You know, they will trace that history. So uh I believe that our traditional rulers have. A very, very important role to play here. And that's why my government will give them all the support that is needed. Because it will be one heavy burden taken away from government to resolve local issues locally. I know that in the US, there are certain issues that. They are, they don't allow the Supreme Court of the US to handle. They will say, no, these are local issues that need to be settled by the local. Cost or the local communities. So is the same thing we will try and apply. To ensure that local issues are settled locally in a manner that. Everybody knows where the truth is and we will give legal, legal backing uh to that.
Thank you. Um Professor Taohuli, floor is yours.
That is to her man to learn.
Oh, apologies. Uh yeah, please, uh Damant alone, feel free to unmute yourself.
Okay, uh can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sincerely appreciate uh Mutat and youth for making this platform for us to see. Talk to those who are there that want to lead us and I also want to thank you for this great manifesto because. Um I've seen some great things that if you really get there and do they. It's gonna help the main estate at large. I just have three questions. Me, I'm a youth because uh. I am, I'm seeing school, I'm doing my um with graduate studies in Moscow. Uh in cybersecurity at the Moscow Institute of Physics and Technology, MRT. So I have three questions for you. The first question is uh, uh what, what have you actually done? Having all these uh problems that our state is facing or has been facing so far, what have you done? Uh in collaboration with the government, the past government to ensure that uh this problem have been solved. Maybe at some point they may not be solved completely, but.
Hello? Hello?
It seems like we lost you maybe the internet.
We tend to understand that uh most youth in Benewa today that go to school and acquire some skills. Is still a problem, but some states like, there are some few states in Nigeria, eh as bad as Nigeria is. Those that go to school, they still find it, um they they are not finding things all that too difficult. I can mention a state like Bruno, um their governors actually trying to support. Uh those that go to school to actually establish some businesses. The final question is. Uh can you promise us that um if you are being elected in the government house, you will not blame any past administration for your failure? Because most governors, when they get there, they will say all sort of sweet things, but when they get there, they start to failing. They tend to blame the 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 past governors, that they they are the one that caused uh their failure. And aside that, should in case, maybe you are not elected, with this good knowledge and ideas, will you still avail yourself to work with anyone? Who may be there? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you for the questions. I didn't get a second one, you said uh. Uh but let me answer the ones I have uh got. You say, what have you done in collaboration with the other states, now with the. The government to solve some of these problems? Well, uh. I am not in government and the way government runs in Nigeria. Most of times when there are problems, for instance, we take the problem of insecurity. The best you can do is first to understand what the problem is. And then to have access to whom you, who is in government that you can talk to. That listens. And then are they willing to do what you have advised? Now, behind the scene, yes, we play our role where we can and where we have access. Implementation is beyond our control. Where we can advise, we advise, and we've done that. I told you when I started these uh uh town hall meeting. That we went into a popular struggle. Where we advised government. Of the time twenty-two years ago. About some of the policy decisions of the government then that we felt were not in the overall interest of the state. To some extent, yes, they took some, others they did not. So that's the much I can say that we are opportunity. Uh avails itself, we are always ready to give our advice and we are more than open even now. With the issue of insecurity, we've been talking and profiling uh uh. Solutions to some of the problems. The the other one that I've got is uh I should promise that there won't be any blame game. Blame me any of the previous administrations for our failures when we come into government. That is without saying what we will not do. The blame game is what we don't do. We will tackle problems as they are. Every government has challenges. Even including my government, when we come in, there will be challenges. And it is when you look at the challenges and how you can resolve them. With the right consultations, because you don't, you are not all knowing. We intend to bring into government, people are. We intend to bring into government people across parties. Our government is not going to just be an Afgha government. If we find merit in somebody in APC, in PDP, in, uh, NMPP, we will bring them on board. So we are going to bridge that gap where there is that bitterness. It's only when this one party in government, uh, they start trading blames. But if I have APC members in my government, I have PDP members in my government, I have NMPP. One, I will remove that bitterness, because one of the biggest challenges that we face in running government in Nigeria is the bitterness. People get fixated about parties and then the, the kind of things that go on, bad blood that runs through is, is not healthy for business. So we will accommodate everyone. So there won't be any room for us to look back and say, oh, we are blaming PDP, oh, we are blaming this one. We will tackle them because coming into government, we knew those problems existed. So there is no reason why we will be saying, oh, we didn't succeed because these people, no. We knew the problems were there, so we would take them head on. But thank you for your courage and I, I pray that you encourage younger people whose, uh, right it is, whose future it is we are trying to protect, to come out and vote. This time around, let there be a difference. Let the decision of the people matter. Because if you don't vote, you won't have a say. So even though you are in Moscow, I believe when the time comes for voting, make haste to come home and cast your vote. But thank you very much. God bless you over there.
Thank you. Yeah, um, we have time just for one more question and, uh, we'll, we'll wrap things up. Um, so, Mr. Gerard, you have your hands up, please unmute yourself.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Mine is just, uh, a contribution on the, uh, that governments do not run businesses. In Benue here, we have a company that. The, uh, the idea that, uh, uh, governments all over the world don't run businesses is false. There is Amtrak in the United States. It's a government corporation. Uh, the, what, uh, Benue Investment and Property Company is doing is, it's amazing. They are still doing it. So government can run a business successfully, even in Benue State.
I couldn't agree more. And we will prove it.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I think, uh, with that Gerard's, uh, contribution, um, we have come to the end of the time that we have. We just want to be able to, uh, thank everyone for attending and most especially, thank you, Mr. Joe Waya. I mean, I, I will have to the president to give like his final, uh, thanks, but, um, on the personal level, thank you. Thank you for the time. Thank you for, you know, letting us in on your manifesto. And thank everyone for making our time to attend, uh, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, I will second. Uh, on a way, I just want to, on behalf of, uh, Mutta and, uh, the audience, wherever they may be, thank you for taking the time of your very, uh, tight schedule to, uh, to come on this program to educate, um, uh, to, to talk to us about your programs for the state and why you threw your hat in the ring. We appreciate you, uh, wish you every success at the pool. And, uh, we ask our audience to, uh, exercise their civic duty by voting. Uh, there's no. We want everyone to make sure they vote as if their life depended on it, and it does. Uh, we can't get it, uh, wrong this time around. So, um, with that said, we, we're shutting down now. And, uh, we wish everyone safety, wh- whoever they may be. Uh, I want to thank the candidate particularly about one thing he said, and he said it emphatically, and that is about security. It is very, very important, just like he said. And he was just a hundred percent on that and on so many other issues. Um, let's, let's make sure we maintain security in our state so that we can see development. And, uh, this is particularly to the youth who are used to ferment all kinds of trouble. Uh, at the polls, I just want them to know that, um, they shouldn't be used. Should any politician want to use them, they should ask the politician to use it, uh, to ask their children to go and cause trouble. And, uh, next week, we'll be having one of, uh, similar event for another candidate. Our job, we are not a political organization. We just want to, uh, give the platform an opportunity to talk to the voters and for the voters to ask questions. We have asked a lot of questions here. Uh, you have had the answers. And, uh, we believe you can act on it. And like I always say, there are no political parties in Nigeria, they are just alphabets. So vote people, vote people that you believe will do the right thing for you. And for your children yet unborn. Uh, we have lots of issues in Benue. We need to take some corrective measures before we get to a point of no return. So thank you all and have a wonderful, uh, Sunday. And please join us again next Sunday for, uh, similar event, but for another, uh, uh, gubernatorial candidate. Thank you and, uh, bye.
Thank you.